Thanks to everybody for joining us this afternoon. Greatly appreciate it. Uh, I know your time is precious. I'm going to begin with you, Dr. Andrews, if I can. I'd like you to tell us why you believe you're the best candidate in this race.
Good evening to everyone. I'm Marsha Andrews, the candidate for school board. I think my experience, my master's degree in education, my bachelor's degree in education, as well as the successful track record working as a teacher, a principal, a human resources chief, and a director in human resources for 35 years with the school district, 11 years as an outstanding school board member with many, many major accomplishments. I do believe that my endorsements from almost every elected official, community leaders in District Six have seen my work for 11 years and validate the expertise and success that I have had in working in the classroom with teachers, with principals, working in the community, and working with parents. I can say that I have been on the ground as an educator, as an administrator, and as someone who has lived in District Six for over 30 years. So I know the area, 41 schools I'm in and out of, which makes me very familiar with what goes on in the classroom. And I have the keen knowledge of the unique needs of our teachers, our principals, our children, our parents, as well as our community. And this is why the support is very high for me. Over the years, I've never let them down because I truly was a teacher, am a teacher, and will always be a teacher. My daughter is a teacher right now. Currently, my children went to Palm Beach County School District. My grandkids have gone there, graduated. I have one left. And I am a Palm Beach County School District graduate from historic Roosevelt High School. So I just know the work. I can hit the ground running because I truly believe in what I do for every child in Palm Beach County.
Okay, thank you very much for that opening statement. Dr. Andrews, the Florida Legislature this past session passed a bill that imposes term limits on school board members of no more than 12 consecutive years. What do you think of that idea?
I think that idea is fine. I've been on the school district for quite a while, but I think I've made a difference of being on the school district. I certainly don't have any objections to term limits. But I do believe what I've done in my 11 years, I needed to have the time to do it. And it does take time to be a good school board member. You need to have the time, full time, to be out in the schools and the communities, working with the elected officials, working with the parents. You do need that time. So the term limits law that's out there now, I certainly abide by it. But I do want people who run for the school board to be committed. And it's not a part-time job. It's a full-time job to be able to be in the classrooms, working with the teachers and working with the parents, the community. You have to be on the ground almost 24/7, and you have to be fully committed. So the term limits are fine, but I do know during this time, I need to be on the school board at least as we move forward for the next four years because of the pandemic, the unfinished learning, the mental health crisis that we're in, school safety. I know the work. And that's why I'm happy that term limits didn't kick in right now for me so that I can continue the work.
Well, that was my other question. I mean, if you don't mind, you support the concept of 12-year term limits as long as they don't apply to you personally, is that right?
No, I do. I do think that we need time. I love it if you could stay on the school board as long as you can, especially if you have the time to do the work. But the law is out there, so I will always support the law. But I do believe you need people to know the work. You can't just come in and come out. I believe the time that I've spent on the school board helps me to be the best school board member that can be as we move out of a pandemic. New people, it takes them time. As I look at my competitors, many of them, I've been out here 11 years. I don't know them. I know some are in the school district, many are not. It's going to take the time. When you have 41 schools in District Six to get to know, to get to know the communities, it does take time. I would love to see those extensions, but the legislature has spoken. I can agree with it. But I think I'm the lucky one that I get another chance to be on a little longer, especially coming out of a pandemic where I know we need expertise to get the job done, experience and successful record.
All right, thank you very much. Let me move to Deanne Ubers. And the same question for you, Ms. Ubers, and that is, why are you the best candidate in this race, particularly why are you a better candidate than Dr. Andrews with her experience?
Well, I don't want to compare myself to anyone, but I believe in my heart that the voters should vote for me and I'm the best candidate because I'm a teacher, I am fresh, I'm in the classroom. I know what's going on here and now, what I do, what I say, what I teach is all relevant. I personally understand the school system. I want what's best for the students. I've also been a parent of students in the Palm Beach school system. So I understand the dynamics of what needs to be done for the students as a teacher, the teachers, and the parents. I truly believe in the rights of parents. Most of all, I am an honest person with integrity, and I will get everything that needs to get done, even if I have to do it myself. That's where I'm at right now. That's why I'm the best one.
Okay. Doesn't experience count for something? The Dr. Andrews went into some, a lot of detail about her work as an educator and as a, in the school system.
Well, someone had to give Dr. Andrews that experience. So she's had the experience. So why not get someone new the experience also to do what needs to be done, what they think should be done in the system? Does experience count? Yes, it does. When I became a teacher, I had no experience, only practicum. But then as my years went on, I became more and more experienced. And I think I'm at a place after 19 going on 20 years this year in August, what exactly needs to be done? What teachers really, really need are the help. They need more ESE teachers in the classroom. ESE teachers are now more facilitators than they are co-teachers. There's so many relevant things that need to be done. And I think Dr. Andrews, it's a matter of a phone call for her or send you off to someone or shuffle you off to someone else. But I think there are things that the board should take under consideration, even if you get another committee to do certain things. Because CTA cannot take care of everything, and a board member can't walk up and do everything. But I think some things they should take the time to do. Like, we were at a Wellington meet and greet, and she made a statement saying that when I said that, you know, if I had to do it myself, I'll do it myself. She said, oh, it's not done like that. And that's why it's a new day for a new way. There's got to be a new way of doing these things.
I wanted to ask you, you're still in the teaching profession. Tell me something specific you would do as a, tell me something you would do specifically as a school board member to reverse the tide of people leaving the teaching profession.
Okay, well, teachers and I have talked about this a little bit, and we've talked about salaries, and we talked about how the five-year teachers are making more than the 10-year teachers. So we know it's all because of when our charter, Dr. Charter was in place, and we didn't get a raise for five years. So the teachers coming in, the brand new teachers made more than the five-year teachers. So we understand that. So right, what happened, what's happening right now is, I think the board went ahead and do a referendum, oh, you know, voters go ahead and vote on this so the teachers can get more money. But that's only temporary. It's only four years. Next, this year, August into the next year is going to be the last year for that. When that happens, you've got teachers whose salaries are going to drop $10,000, $5,000, $1,000. Some of these teachers, even though they're getting that referendum pay right now, they cannot pay their rents, and they're trying to hold on to a mortgage. They're going to leave. So what am I going to do? I'm going to go in there and look at the budget. We've had like a 1, 4.1 million budget, I think, last year. I'm going to go and take a really good look at the budget with some financial assistance and see how we could adjust the salaries so people can stay here in Palm Beach County because it's really getting too expensive for teachers to live here. I'm a mentor teacher, I've been a mentor teacher for a minute, and a lot of teachers after three years, they pack up and leave because it's too expensive to be here. So that's one of the things I would like to really try hard to do when I get in as a school board member, adjust the salaries.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Ubers, you're here. There is a, I was going to say, there is a referendum that is coming up this year that would extend those raises. So it's not a, it's not a automatic that people are going to be losing their raises.
Well, let's think about this because when the referendum did come, we had the charter schools go to court over that. When it went over court, court over that, they kind of won. And when they won, what they're saying is, when the next referendum comes, they're going to get a piece of the pie. So yes, our salaries are going to be lowered.
Well, they're already getting a piece of the pie because that was part of a lawsuit that they settled in order to, with the charter schools. So that part's already been, I don't really see it having a significant difference if it passes. Obviously, if it fails, it's going to have a huge impact.
Okay. Let me turn to Amanda Silvestri and ask you, Ms. Silvestri, the same question, and that is why your, why voters should elect you and not any of the other candidates in this You're on mute, Ms. Silvestri. You're on mute.
Your microphone, please. I did not realize. I'm Amanda Silvestri, candidate for Palm Beach County School Board District Six. Thank you guys for having me. I'm a mom of two kids in elementary school. And this race really did start for me because I felt very unheard and unrepresented by the board. But while I've been on the campaign trail, I've learned and talked to many other people in the community, whether it be officers, teachers, the business community, our contractors, and they feel the same way. So for me, as a board member, I would be willing to listen to all of our community, work with them, work for them. And I just think it's time for a new, fresh voice. Ms. Andrews, you've done a wonderful job for 12 years, and we thank you. And it's nothing personal, but you know, after going to these meetings and feeling the way I did and being an advocate for my children and not being heard, and then hearing from the community, I really do think it's time for a new voice and a new representative.
What is it that's not being heard? What is it that the board members are not hearing and not listening to specifically?
Well, this really did start with the COVID-19 issue. For my children, being masked was something that I wanted to be able to choose for them. We went into the schools, they wore their masks, and you know, we followed the rules. But once the executive order was in place, it was time for that to end. And I don't agree with the board's decision to defy the order. So that was one of my issues. But from the beginning, I did not appreciate the equity statement that was put in to dismantle structures rooted in white advantage. And I just feel that there's many things that the board has done in the last two years that don't align with every family in Palm Beach County.
It's an old issue, I know, but Ms. Silvestri, am I not right? The Centers for Disease Control and a lot of medical professionals and pediatricians recommended the wearing of masks to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Do you agree with that?
They did recommend that, but by the time the executive order came through, there were different recommendations.
And what is your opinion about the threat, never carried out, I don't believe, but the threat to strip board members' salaries and to take money, state money away from school districts that insisted on masks?
Well, that certainly wasn't up to me. I do think that they should have followed the executive order, which was, I didn't agree with that. So I guess a punishment fits a crime sometimes.
Okay. Which other, which other recommendations do you mean?
What are you referring to?
You said by the time the executive order came, there were other recommendations.
Yes, we had a new surgeon general and different recommendations were.
Right, so aside from Dr. Ladapo, were there any other recommendations to drop the masks?
Um, at this point, it was supposed to be up to the parents. And there wasn't enough proof showing us that they were working. And when I asked for data, I was not given it by the board, but the Commissioner Corcoran sent me data. And of the counties that were masked and unmasked, there was no difference in the masked counties versus the unmasked counties.
The information that Commissioner, former Commissioner Corcoran sent around has been picked apart fairly well to show that they were cherry picking a bit. I'm just trying to get clear if there was any other recommendation besides the one from the surgeon general. I'm gathering, I'm gathering there was not, right?
It was two years at this point, but parental choice was what was supposed to be happening in our schools.
Right. And do you think, okay, thank you.
I'm going to just open the floor to Scott Travis and Dan Sweeney, too, for other questions.
Go ahead, Scott. You're muted, your microphone is. There you go. Nope.
Sorry about that. I said, I'm opening the floor to Scott and to Dan Sweeney for questions.
Yeah, right. Yeah, no, and I did, I made the mistake of having it muted, which is a common issue. So, yeah, so a couple of things. First, Ms. Silvestri, I know that Governor DeSantis has had a form, you know, where he was asking for people to fill out for, to have recommendations of school board members that he was going to endorse, that shared his values. I was wondering if you filled that out and if you've heard yet whether he's going to be endorsing you.
I did fill it out, and I'm still waiting to find out.
Okay. And Ms. Andrews, I was wondering what your thought about, both in your race and in many other races, there are lots of conservative voices that have decided to join this race. I've never seen anything quite like it, and I've covered a lot of school district elections. What do you attribute this, you know, all this kind of conservative opposition that the school board is receiving?
Well, first of all, I want to answer that, and I would like to have some time to respond to what I've heard from Ms. Ubers, too. But I think it's because of the pandemic. And this, in the United States of America and across the world, we had never had a pandemic before. And we had to follow the healthcare officials, the health department, the healthcare district health experts, because people were dying. We lost a million people from this COVID-19 pandemic. So people were frightened. They did not know which way to go. And I think this is a part of what we're dealing with right now. As a school board member, I'm one of seven. And as a result, when the pandemic became the biggest thing that has happened in this country and across the world, we had to pay attention to medical officials, medical people who had the knowledge to make sure that we did the right thing for all children, for our employees. And I think the people across the country had differences of opinion. Many times, they weren't listening to the quality health opinions coming from those who had the experience. That's what I did. I stand by it right now because we were able to take care of all of our children, their physical needs. No one died here in our school district. We were able to have in-person school remote and then go back to in-person school, keeping our schools clean and safe and healthy for our children. When we followed the rules based on the local policies that we had in place, it was based on what we heard from medical officials. A lot of people across the country do not want to listen to the medical experts. That's one thing that I do. And I think that's a part of what's going on now, masks, vaccines, and so on. I do believe in parents' rights. I'm still a teacher. I was a teacher. And I recognize a parent is very important, and we want to hear from them. But we have over 180,000 children in the school district of Palm Beach County, and different parents have different wishes. You had parents worried so much that once we made masks optional, they continued to let their children wear a mask because they were concerned still about the health of their children. I think I made a wonderful decision by sticking with health professionals, making sure that we kept our buildings clean, sanitized, and safe. And when we had to close our schools down to go for virtual learning, we did what we needed to do. And when we opened up, we followed the rules. When the governor came through and mandated that it had to be optional, we followed the law. But it is a local level concern that I'm talking about. Experience on a school board makes a difference. Stand up for all children. And that's what we did in the midst of one of the worst pandemics that we've had in the history, you know, of the world. And I think you have so many different people with different opinions about it, and this is where it started. That's where I first saw Ms. Silvestri at a school board meeting about masks. But I will stick to what I did for her child, as well as any other child within Palm Beach County, that we did the right thing to keep our children safe. And we were able to open our schools back up. And most parents, the majority of them, said we did a great job. But I want to follow up. When I heard someone says that we needed somebody new, I am always a teacher. And I want to be real clear. I've hired over 1,000 teachers in Palm Beach County, as well as many administrators. I have done the work. I continue to do the work. I know I can't do the work alone because it's seven school board members. But I can tell you this, I'm on the ground in the schools, not in one classroom, Ms. Ubers. I'm in many classrooms, not in one school or two schools. I have 41 schools, and I'm working it every single day. And yes, I have to work in collaboration with principals, teachers, parents, and so on. And this is why teachers in Palm Beach County support me because they know me, and they know my work has been outstanding because I'm on the ground with a listening ear to them. Parents support me because I'm on the ground with a listening ear to them, and the community supports me.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Ubers, when I was looking through some of the candidates that had filed for this, most of the challengers that we saw, you know, were, had concerns about masks, CRT, LGBTQ issues. Are any of those reasons why you are, were those concerns of yours?
No, those were not concerns of mine. I wore masks when I went back to school. So if you ask me to wear a mask, I wear a mask. When we didn't have to wear a mask, I didn't wear a mask. But there's so much content to be taught. I can't fuss over masks. It's just, that's just like nothing to me, for me to fuss over as a teacher. But I do want to say this, because Mrs. Andrews said that teachers support her. I want to say this, I did speak to CTA, but I really qualified very late. In June, I did qualify. And CT, when I reached out to Justin Cotts, he told me that, you know, they had already selected Mrs. Andrews. So I don't, I don't want people to think, oh, I don't have to support a CTA. I am a CTA member. But because I qualified late and they didn't make the decision between January and April, I was told they were talking about it, and the decision came up in June. So I do have, I also have support of teachers. I am here because we, as teachers, were talking and have been talking and have been talking about what needs to change. That's why I am here, because of teachers and of students, too. Because like Ms. Andrews, she knows this, I have a lot of kids who don't want to go straight out of, they don't want to go to college out of high school. And so I'm here for those kids also, who we need to put additional work tracks in the system for these kids who want to just graduate and go to work. They don't have a college in mind, they don't, they don't, they had the discipline to do that studying. So that's why I'm here.
Okay, all right. And before, Ms. Andrews, before we get to you, I just wanted to ask Ms. Silvestri, as I mentioned, you know, there's a lot of candidates, conservative candidates, that had a lot of the very same issues when you look at their websites, the masks, CRT, or equity issues, the gender and LGBTQ stuff. I was wondering if, is there, is there part of a, is this a concerted, like a movement that's going on where people, were you recruited by a particular group in order to join, or how did, was it all organic? Did each of you sort of decide individually that you wanted to do, or can you explain sort of how that came about?
Okay, well, first, if you look at my website, none of those issues are actually on my website. I'm here for teachers and children to be put first, to ensure school safety, to ensure collaborative leadership with the community, and also to work on our trades programs. And that is what's on my website. None of the issues that you just mentioned are actually on my website. I am not a right-winger, whatever you guys would like to categorize, categorize me as. I am a mom who sees a lot of issues in the school, and I have two children in elementary school, and I really care about our teachers. Many of them have left, some that I was looking to and very excited for my children to have one day, and they will not have them because they are now gone. They will now vote for me, but they are not here anymore. So those are my issues and why I am running. No one recruited me. I just started really waking up and paying attention to what's going on. And I have a humongous heart for our teachers and for our children and for our police officers and for our community.
Okay, well, I mean, two of the three issues you brought up yourself, which were the masks and the, and the white advantage issue, which is kind of, I put in the same category as the CRT, which is the racial equity stuff.
That's for the first school board meeting that I went and spoke at, those were the issues that I talked about. And what I was going to say was the progression of how I got to where I am today. But those are the things that really opened my eyes and made me pay attention to what's really going on. Because for years, I just trusted that everything was peachy keen, and the school board was doing exactly what they were supposed to do for our teachers and our children. And I did not feel that. And once I started paying attention, I realized that I would like to step up and help, and I have the time to do it, and I'd love to do it.
Thank you. If I may, you say that you don't want to define yourself as a right-winger. You have $100 contribution from this contreras who's running in another race, I believe. She was at the Capitol on January 6th.
And I didn't know she did that. I actually met her at a school board meeting as well. X me, and I like her, she's a great candidate.
Okay. Could I, could I do a couple of quick answer things here, Steve, on some local issues?
Yeah, by all means, go ahead, sure.
Okay, I'd like if you, maybe we'll try to do this if we can in 30-second bits and maybe go reverse alphabetically. So that would be Silvestri Ubers. Andrews, do you want the sheriff's office to take over the school police department? Ms. Silvestri?
I do, but I believe that there's other things that need to happen first, and I don't even believe that the sheriff's office is able to do that until they're done merging with Boynton Beach, and that's going to take place in January. So we have to come up with something before then. But yes, that does seem like a good option.
Because?
Because our officers want and need that, and they don't want to be beholden to the district and the principals, they would like to answer to the sheriffs directly.
Okay, Ms. Ubers?
Well, I have something on my platform called bridging, Bridge Blue, that's bridge police officers with school kids. Do we need that? We need that? Do we need it now? I'm not sure if we need it right now, but there needs to be a bridging first because a lot of my kids don't trust police. So I think we need to build a program, a bridging, Bridge Blue, so they can learn to trust, have open, honest conversations, and then they can come on the campuses as protecting the campus.
Okay, Dr. Andrews?
I do not want, at this time, to say that I would want the sheriff department to take over the school district police. I do know that we are in severe times, but I do believe our school police does a great job right now. We have an officer in every school, sometimes more than one officer. We have hardened our schools, we have new technology, we have a brand-new chief of police. We are working with the sheriff's office. Everybody says, well, you want them to take over. They're already there, they're working with us. We also have partnerships with many municipalities where we come together. I think we have to continue to come together and assess what we do to keep our children safe, because we cannot educate our children if they're not safe. I do believe in school police officers very much because they've had the training. When you talk about working together and knowing how to handle all children, the counseling mode has to be in place, the support mode has to be in place. Our district police officers have had that training. And so if we ever go that route, the other office would have, other officers would have to have that.
To get that? Okay. Before we leave this, Ms. Silvestri, you said, has Boynton Beach voted to go with the sheriff's office?
I believe they're in the process of the merger now.
The city commission has not taken any action that I'm aware of. They're talking, but I don't think it's, there's no decision. Has there been? Did I, I don't think I, that's happened.
I, last time I spoke to Tom Turk, and I believe that it was, they were in the process of doing that.
Okay, all right, next question. Please give a brief evaluation of how Superintendent Burke is doing, Ms. Silvestri.
Yes, he came into an absolute mess, so we can't hold that against him. And so he hasn't been in his position for very long, so it's very hard to evaluate him at this time. I would like to see in about a year how I would feel after he's had time to clean up some of the messes and show, show what he can do once everything is level again. But the one thing I will say is that his statement to bring lawyers' guns and money was highly inappropriate and unprofessional. And I do think that he should watch things like that that he says because the community doesn't take lightly to comments about guns.
Ms. yours?
As for me, as a school teacher, I, I wrote down on the, on the question you gave me, so far so good because I really haven't had a lot of time to really evaluate him from a teacher's standpoint. So, so far so good. He's, he's not making so much waves, unneeded waves, I should say.
Okay, Dr. Andrews?
I think Mr. Burke is doing a good job. He's in his first year. He has been on the ground in the schools, in all of the communities of District Six. He's been there. I think he brings a wealth of experience from the financial side. He's working close with all of the academic leaders. And he has the wherewithal to make a difference for the parents. He's been meeting with parent groups, he's been meeting with elected officials, and he works twenty-four seven. I have the opportunity of meeting with him once or twice a week and being on the ground with him as he did at schools. I'm very impressed with that. On the first day at school, he was everywhere, from Boca Raton to Jupiter to Belgrade. He is out there making it happen and raising his voice to let everybody know, I'm here. I'm here to hear from parents. I'm here to know what students need. I'm in the classroom, in the schools. I love his disposition on what he wants to do to make our county even better than it is. It's already A-rated, top-performing, ninety-five point nine graduation rate. Great things are happening, but we know that we've got to take care of so many students as we come from this pandemic for unfinished learning, mental health, and security. He's wrapped his arms around all of those. And over the next year, I think he's going to show you some great things, more than what you see now.
And just, just quickly, Ms. Silvestri, you mentioned, of course, masks and the equity statement. Is there any other vote that Dr. Andrews has cast that you strongly disagree with?
I have to look back. I mean, I didn't, I strongly disagree with when everyone went against the governor's executive order.
Right, we discussed the masks, but is there anything beyond that, say, related to academics or something like that?
Not that I can think of at this time.
Okay, Ms. yours, how about you?
Not that I can think of, of this time. I just, I just feel as if there's more to be done and she can do just a little bit more for teachers.
Okay, thank you.
May I add, may I add to that? Since somebody's saying I can do more for teachers, I'm meeting with teachers all the time. And I want to say for Ms. Silvestri, as well as Mrs. yours, Ms. Silvestri, every school in your District Six region of Wellington is a straight A school. I mean, the, the community, the elected officials pour monies into that particular area of Wellington to make sure those children in that area get everything. Ms. yours, back in the acreage where you live, most of the children and the schools are A-rated schools. I must say, I'm in those schools, I know that. I'm out in the Glades region, I don't know if you've ever been there, but I'm out there. That's an area where we need a whole lot of help. I'm out there too. So when you talk about academics, there are no D or F schools in District Six at all. You want me to do more? I continue to do more because we can't leave any students behind. This is why I have opened up West Technical Education Center with welding, carpentry, construction, HVAC, electrical, and now a new CDL program where we have raised almost six, six hundred thousand dollars from the governor over the last few years, but over three million so that kids can have more opportunities. And that West Head is not just for the Glades, it's for the eastern region of District Six. So I've been working on the ground for all students, the top, the middle, and the bottom, to bring everybody where they should be.
Thank you. Can I just say one thing? Thank you, Ms. Andrews. You said you don't know if I've ever been to the Glades. I worked at Glade Central High School for three years as a reading teacher, ELA teacher, and a ESOL ELA teacher.
And that's great. I wonder, have you been there lately? Because I haven't seen you there.
Yeah, I've been there, I have a few friends there, yes.
Yeah, but we need to be on the ground, working with all those students who need a lot of help.
Dr. Andrews, is it a, in your judgment, is it a positive development? Is asserting himself more in local school board races? He's going to be endorsing candidates? He's a proponent of what he describes as a greater parental rights and to eliminate the woke culture in our schools. What do you think about that?
I couldn't hear the first part of it, but it sounds like you were asking if the governor is doing the right thing by inserting himself in. Was that the question? Well, I, I think that's wrong because we should stay nonpartisan. We're not a Democrat or a Republican, we have to work together. And for him to be asserting himself in like that, I think that's wrong. I was very pleased that he understood that we need vocational programs. And he's been funding that along with Rick Scott and others. But to actually assert himself in nonpartisan, I think that's wrong. I have to look at every child, not a Democratic child or a Republican child, but every child. And we don't need to have candidates looking at themselves as a Democrat or Republican candidate. So I think that's absolutely not correct.
Okay, and, and let me ask Amanda Silvestri to, to respond to what Dr. Andrews has just said about the governor's role.
So I feel the governor feels the need to step in. I will just mention one book that I found in a library, it's called Flamer. And we have the right to object to these books. And this is one of the things that's been a huge concern of parents and a huge concern of the governors. And it doesn't really matter whether you're a Republican or a Democrat. If there's pornography in the libraries, it's inappropriate. This book talked about masturbating.
In, in which library?
Eating into a Mountain Dew bottle and even cutting the wrist. So this was a book.
In, in, in which library?
This was in, Park Vista was one of the schools it was in. You know, you mentioned Democrat or Republican. Children are not Democrat or Republican, they're children, they're our students. Nobody cares what parent is a Democrat or Republican, I certainly don't. This is about new representation for the school. I don't look at myself as a Republican or a Democrat, it doesn't matter to me. This is about the schools, this is about the teachers, this is about the children.
Tell us a little more, tell us a little bit more of Ms. Silvestri about the, I, I, your, your voice broke up. The book Flamer, what is in that book that you find objectionable?
Okay, it's a book about a boy who's sitting there watching porn masturbating, and then he ejaculates into a Mountain Dew bottle. And then towards the end of the book, it shows him cutting his wrist. So that book is not appropriate. It's not called book banning, this is called get that book out of the schools. And that's what it is. And you know, it's really sad when one side or the other side tries to make out one side to be something when we're just normal people who don't want our children seeing a book like that. And it should have never made its way into the schools. And there's plenty of other ones.
Dr. Andrews, there's somebody who's in the system, yes, go ahead.
I have to respond to that, you know. I think when you have books that come in, not just from the classroom set of books, but books that could be in a library, somebody could bring to the school. It could be a school, a book like that in your school. And if it is, we have policies and procedures to remove these books. This is what we're doing now based on what the governor has said. But we've always done that. And let me, let me explain that piece. And so when you find one book or two books that could slip into a school and nobody knew or did not reach the level of a parent, then that's the time for a parent to say something. I want to say something to you, Ms. Silvestri. I sit on the Wellington Education, Education Committee, they meet once a month. I've never seen you there. I mean, I've never seen the people that I see running for school board at any of these meetings. When you say you want the parents to know things, we, we meet, we meet in Royal Palm Beach. We're out there in the acreage area in Westlake, we're out in the Glades. All of the parents, the meetings are monthly. And I've never seen any of you complaining. But guess what? You are now, we're hearing you. If there's a book on a shelf that needs to be removed, we're removing them. We do follow the law.
Go ahead, Ms. Silvestri, if you have something you want to add, add to that, by all means.
Oh, yes, I have several friends that are on the board in Wellington. I do discuss a lot of things with them. Unfortunately, when you're running for a school board and you're learning how to be a candidate all at once when you're just a mom, it's been a lot of work and I don't necessarily have those days available because I have other things that I'm doing right now. It is a priority of mine. And at the time, it was go straight to the school board and let's talk to our representatives and get the help that we need. And unfortunately, we did not. And so then I decided to run for office. So I didn't take the step of going to all of those meetings. And trust me, I will be at those meetings when I have more free time.
And I'd like to throw in, we have the, the SAC meetings. I don't know if you know, that's a time when you can express your concerns if something's happening at your child's school. The PTSAs, those are all there. I know, I go to those, I'm a part of those. And I just had never seen you at any of these things.
Ms. Silvestri, just again, on, I know we've touched, discussed masks, but when you said you didn't get help from the school board, was there anything beyond masks that you didn't get help with?
Well, at this time, I feel like everything that is discussed by the board is more not related to academics. Now, my son started kindergarten online and my daughter ended her third grade year where we had to go online. Well, at the end of that school year, they didn't get to learn multiplication. And then when they started the new school year, we went into fourth grade and they started division, fractions, and all these children are behind. So there's issues like that. And I don't hear a lot of discussion about how are we going to get the kids caught up? How are we going to get these teachers a little bit of extra money so we, they can tutor these? Because I was paying forty dollars a week for a tutor to try and get my daughter caught up. And that's very expensive, not everybody can do that. So I just don't hear a lot of the discussions that need to be discussed on the board. And I hear a lot of discussions about other issues that maybe they're important, but are they as important as getting our kids caught up? Because this is their future.
Well, that's why one of my priorities is unfinished learning. And Ms. Silvestri, if you had paid attention closely, as we moved out of the pandemic, we had tutoring. We're working with the students that had unfinished learning. We provided just last year with a lot of support for children who needed that additional help. I was just over at H, New Horizons yesterday, talking to some of the children who are at the summer program and the summer camp program, working with the village of Wellington so that they can get caught up. That's what we're putting our emphasis on with the money that's come from the American Rescue Plan. We have provided that tutoring assistance and support. We just ordered a paper, which actually has online tutoring for anyone, mostly at the high school and secondary level, to get the support they need. We know the unfinished learning and the mental health is a big deal. It's going to take a while to get everybody back. That's why I'm running, because everybody's not going to just bounce back now that we're getting through the pandemic. It's because we're going to have to put those programs in place to take care of every individual student.
Dr. Andrews, the school board's equity statement, which is a statement of policy values as it relates to equal educational opportunity, so forth. It was, it was revised last year after a lot of pushback from parents, from the public. It was, I think some people might say, watered down to remove references to white oppression. I forget the exact language. But, but did you support that change and what was behind that change?
I supported that change. Our equity statement and our mission is very good. We educate to affirm and inspire our children. But when we were in our workshop and we talked about that, we should have probably sent it out to have it really looked at. Because when we put it out there and it had the white privilege quote in there, there was a lot of concern. And that told me that people felt uncomfortable. They said they felt like, you know, it was derogatory to them, it made them feel sad. We know that we have to all come together. I voted and I took heat about that, but I didn't care about that because I do believe we have to say the right things, do the right things to bring people together. And we don't want to write anything down that's going to hurt the feelings of a student, a parent, or anybody in the community. And when that went out, we should have really looked at that a lot closer. Our consultant said, yeah, I think this is the way to go. And we were in our meeting and looking at that, but when it came back after it was vetted, we saw that people didn't like that. And I certainly felt like I'd never want to be associated with something that could hurt anybody's feeling, a child, a parent, a community leader, or else.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, go ahead. I have a question, but, but go ahead, yes.
Okay, when I watched the workshop, when they were deciding about the equity statement, there were a few board members who said, we don't want to take this out to the community. We don't want them nitpicking and tearing this apart and saying that we're taking something away from their children. We're not going to do that, just put it through. So it was a, a decision made by the board members to not bring this out to the community. And that is not transparency, that is not honesty, and that is not good representation of the community as a whole. Because if you, you obviously knew that it wasn't okay and you put it through anyways. And for what? Did you want it to be hidden? You didn't think we were going to see it? Because at some point, we were going to see it. I just don't, I don't even understand how such a bold statement like that could not have any community input.
I do want to say that some parents and some people felt that that was a wonderful, bold statement. But when we got the feedback that people were upset, this is when we changed. We felt like our equity statement was very bold anyway and we could remove that. But there were some people that were very upset that we removed those words. But when parents, community, children, if they feel hurt, they feel offended, and I know that, I will make a change.
Yeah, Ms. Silvestri, I was wondering, you know, besides the white advantage statement in there that the school board took out, did you support the rest of the statement and would you have supported it with that one change that was made?
So the previous mission statement, this is one of the things that upsets me the most, actually. So the previous mission statement said that you were going to provide a world-class education to all of the children in Palm Beach County. And I think that is the most beautiful and powerful statement that you could have. A world-class education for all the children in Palm Beach County. It is now an equity-embedded education with an equitable outcome for all. That does not sound powerful. Why can't we just have the world-class education for our children?
We are still providing a world-class education for our children, but we cannot leave anybody behind. And this, this is why, when we're talking about.
I'm sorry.
Well, no, finish your thought, Ms. Andrews.
My daughter was in the High Achieving Program at Wellington Elementary. And now we don't have one anymore for fourth grade. I don't think they even have one for fifth grade. So I was wondering if this dismantling of certain structures includes the High Achieving Program? Because I think part of a world-class education was that my daughter took a test because she's really good at reading and writing, and she was in a High Achieving class. Past year, now she doesn't have that anymore. She's just in the regular class.
And I'd like to ask Ms. Silvestri, did you work with the principal, your region superintendent, to find out exactly what's going on at that school? That's only one school that has changed the program, not the entire district. We're working hard in Palm Beach County to have more AMP programs so that we have advanced math, advanced programs for all of our children. And that school is still different, that's run by an administration. So did you do that?
Wellington Elementary is your district and I'm asking you, why don't we have that program anymore at Wellington Elementary?
Well, I can check on that since you told me it wasn't anything that has been brought to my attention. And certainly I start right at the school.
The principal about it.
Yeah, I start right with the superintendent, the principal, and the region superintendent. And that's what we want the parents to do. It doesn't start right at the school board, it starts right at the school.
I didn't come to you with that, I went to the principal about it.
What did the principal say?
That they don't have the program anymore and she doesn't really know why. They're not, the principals are, you know, they're very professional and they're not allowed to say certain things. So there was really no answer. We, we just don't have it this grade anymore.
But I want to tell Ms. Silvestri, since I'm talking to you right now, and it's a good time that we're talking, that there is a regional superintendent and an instructional superintendent that supervises Wellington Elementary. And for something that's important to you like that, I would think that you would follow that command and you certainly could have called me. I never heard that until today.
Well, no insult to you, but you know, you talk about boots on the ground at all the schools, but you didn't know about that.
Well, I'm not going to know everything and I do expect parents, I expect the schools, I expect the region superintendent. Work with me if there's a big issue. You could have helped there, but you did not.
Yes, I did. And you told me that you were going to say that masks were going to be optional for the children. And then you went and voted differently. Yes, I did. And you told me that you were going to say that masks were going to be optional for the children. And then you went and voted differently. So I didn't know.
Well, remember, we talked about masks early on and I'm following the health professionals. The Health Department of Palm Beach County, the doctors, and we saved the lives of children. We lost a million people. I've already said that early on here. I stand by what I did for every child in Palm Beach County and.
That's all I'm saying. You told me you were going to vote differently.
That's not correct.
Okay.
Okay, we've got some irreconcilable differences here, which we some, sometimes have in a political campaign. Let me ask Randy Scott, Dan Sweeney, if you have any uh, additional questions I want to.
Uh, yeah, I, I do. Um, so um, the, this district is a, a extremely diverse district. And I was actually amazed at how many schools it has compared to, um, like, I think District Three has like fourteen and you all have like forty-something schools. It's a, a really large district. And geographically just huge. So um, I, I, I'm interested for the, the, more so for the challengers than, than Ms. Andrews. Cause I know she's been serving that district for twelve years. But how do you serve, you know, a district that is so, that, that has some of the poorest kids in the entire school district? Um, and also has some of the richest and most best performing uh, kids in the school district. When, you know, to make sure that you are providing um, equal eh, whether equity or uh, the best education possible for all, all students, when they're just so, so different. So Ms. Sylvester, or, or go, no, go ahead, Ms. Ubers, you can start.
Um, um, this, it's been so interesting listening. So, but anyway, uh, two things I've learned as a teacher. Um, how do I serve such a large district? And it is the biggest one. Uh, you listen, number one, and you meet the need. If you can't meet the need right away, you find a way to meet the need and solve that problem. So that's, as a teacher, that's what I do. And I'm going to take those same ethics um, to the school board. Just listen to what Sping said. And, and, and do your best to meet the needs.
Okay. And then just as a follow-up to that, you know, the Glades area has historically had the, um, some of the worst performing schools in the district. You know, all the, the Ds and F schools have often been concentrated in that area. And a lot of times people, uh, that area feels like it's been neglected. How do you, uh, how do you properly address the needs of that community?
Well, if, I know for certain in that, um, I forgot the name of the author, but it's a, it's a famous author. He now lives in Palm Beach. He's went there and created a literacy program, which is excellent because that's what they needed. When I went there um, many years ago, um, Glade Central High School was at a one-digit in reading. When I left, we were at a two-digit in reading. But I knew in my heart in time that school was gonna, the grade was gonna come up. And that's exactly what happened. Because it's all about um, repetition. It's all about learning, uh, getting a, a, a program in place and working the program and letting the kids, the teachers and the kids buy into that program. Uh, once they work together along with the parents, the grades go up. And the grades have went up in the Glades and Pahokee over the years. They have.
Okay. And Ms. Sylvester, both the issue of the diversity of the school district and also the Glades area specifically.
Yes. So I agree. We have to listen to them. We have to hear what their needs are. We have to be out there. We need to get in the schools and see what's going on. And there, I know that there's some wonderful programs out there that really work on mentoring and tutoring, such as Take Stock and Children, that I would want to work very closely with and make sure that they have the support they need for the kids as well.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Sylvester, uh, on a different topic, uh, you said it wasn't one of your issues, but uh, do you agree with the uh, governor's uh, and the legislature's parental rights and education, you know, which uh, critics have called the Don't Say Gay Bill? Um, I use that term just because that helps people know exactly which bill we're talking about. Um, there's been a couple of ones called parental rights. So what's your, uh, what's, do you agree with that decision? And do, uh, what, what's your feeling about it?
Okay. So first, I really vehemently despise the, the term Don't Say Gay Bill because it is a, a bill about parental rights and education. And when we call it that, it, it's just, it makes parents that want to be involved in their education and support this bill in any way, it makes you appear as a, as a bigot. And that's, that's so offensive because I'm certainly not. I love everyone. So I just, I really despise that critics or even yourself would call it that because it is the Parental Rights in Education Bill. And that is what it should be called. There should be no um, anti-grooming bill or Don't Say Gay Bill. I don't, I don't think we should call it that. But so for me, this pertains to four to eight-year-olds. And for me, I believe that our children should not be learning gender identity or sexual orientation between the age of four and eight, when they're learning to spell, color in the lines, share toys and make friends. They don't understand the concept yet. So I just don't think it's the time for them to be learning that in school. And if they're going to learn something like that, it should be up to the parent to decide to teach their child that. It's, it's a very small window. Uh, my daughter doesn't even fit into this anymore. She's nine, okay? But it's, my son is, is little, you know, and it's just not the time for that. Uh, he actually went to, um, I know another candidate mentioned it, but he went to a camp. It was my child. And um, they asked him, he, he just finished first grade. They said, tell us your name, your favorite food and your, your preferred pronoun. And he's like, I don't, I don't know what that is. Like, he had no idea what to say. And it's.
Could he, could he have not answered he?
Well, he, he doesn't know that he gets to.
The concept.
He's still learning to read and write. He doesn't know what a pronoun is. He's just finished first grade.
Okay, but I just, I, I get that, but, but I, you know, because the other candidate had mentioned that that was like teaching sex or sexuality. If somebody says what your pronoun is and you're a boy and you say, oh, I'm a he, it almost seems like it could be a learning opportunity to say this.
It, it's definitely a learning opportunity, but he hasn't learned it yet. Cause he hasn't learned that yet in school. So it was a confusing thing. And he's like, I don't know what to say. And it's just confusing. And that's exactly the point. You know that because you're a grown man. He just turned seven. So he hasn't even learned that in school yet. So to discuss this with him when he hasn't even learned that in a book, when they say she, that that's actually a pronoun, he doesn't know the definition of the word yet. So it's just not the time for them to learn it. And that's all parents think.
I, I do want to, I want to.
Which campus is this? Which, which camp was this?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna answer that. It was within the district, but I'm, we had.
I think, and it was a drive for school, the arts.
I'm sorry?
Was it drive for school, the arts?
I'm not answering the question.
Well, well, I'd like to, I'd like to say something that we, may I? I'd like to say that we are not uh, teaching students LGBTQ in K three. We've never done that in Palm Beach County. So I really want to be on record with that. But I did hear Amanda say she would like, she likes Take Stock and Children. Well, I'm on the board for Take Stock and Children. I've been on the board for eleven years. I've been a mentor for Take Stock and Children for all of those eleven years. A lot of my kids have gone off to college. So we know about those programs out in the Glades region, but it's more than that. It's about working with the parents, being on the ground, being in the communities and doing the job. Uh, just at the last, uh, right before the pandemic, we had no F's or D schools in the Glades region. We've been in a pandemic now. So we have a lot of unfinished learning. I don't know what will happen for where we are now for the future. But everybody worked together, the parents, the community, the elected officials, the roundtable. And we removed that stigma because we all worked hard together, not just me, but everybody.
Okay. Well, we, we, we're, we're going to have to leave it there. We have a five o'clock interview. We have, you know, hundreds of candidates that we are doing endorsement interviews with. We have back-to-back ones at four and five, and it is past five o'clock now. So um, you know, I want to uh, thank you all for your time. And uh, if we have any further questions, we will reach out to you individually.
Okay. Thank you.
Very much.
Thanks, folks. Good luck to all of you.
Thank you.